Is being conducted both remotely and in person consistent with chapter 22 of the acts of 22 extending remote meeting protocols through March 31st, 2025. This meeting convening by a zoom video conference and in person as posted on the meeting agenda, which can be found on the town of Grafton website. Please see the meeting agenda for details on how to participate remotely. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Any if you share your screen, anything will be recorded and may be viewable later. This meeting may or actually this meeting will not feature public comment.
No, it may, it may, because we got Elm Rock is a public hearing.
Okay, so this meeting may feature public comment. So anyone that wishes to speak, please step to the podium and state your name and address. If you're on the zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if you're on the phone, our meeting administrator will allow you to speak. So at this time I'm going to hand things over to Mr. McCusker.
Thank you. All right, so I guess we'll start with, we could have started with Elm Rock, but Kay Kay left. So we'll start with Upton Road. I think where we're at is final review of the decision.
Hey, Bill, I'm here if you want to do Elm Rock first. I don't care to interrupt.
Do we have anything to talk about?
I have the homeowner with the fence issue for Will Rock Elm Rock.
Yeah, and we can just let you go at that point, Kay.
Okay, that's fine.
Why don't we just bang out Elm Rock? Okay.
All right.
All right, so we're going to reopen the continuation of case number 827, which is the public hearing for the determination completeness for Elm Rock Estates. And I'll turn it over to you Chad at this point.
Yeah, a little unorthodox here. I'm gonna invite April up.
Yep.
Sure, yeah.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
This is the homeowner that had Dan with the latest Google images found that her lot has the fence on it.
And actually, can you just state your name and address?
Yes, my name is April Sawko, 19 Elm Rock Drive.
How do you spell your last name?
S A W K O.
Okay.
And so we saw that aerial from Dan and we went out. Well, actually I went out there and saw that she had this beautiful fence installed. And it was in the easement area of what we're going to be, you know, turning over to the town for. And the interesting thing about this particular lot is when I went out there is that there's a few lots with a huge drainage easement, actually two other areas. And there's a blanket easement to the left of her home and to the right of her home. It's a double way kind of in there. And not speaking for her, but she could obviously say it. I think she's looking for, you know, can we work something out with the fence? Does it have to come down? Or can this fence be taken down when you actually had to go in there? And me being on the side, Steve O'Connell's here as well. He reviewed some of the area and he can speak to the both of the easements. And when I constructed the the home at this particular location, I did two ways in these two drainage easements. And they were both constructed the same, almost like that conditions of the road. Remember we had that, well, it's supposed to be a road, but it's underneath the grass.
Yep, yep.
The right, I constructed the right side exactly the same as the left hand side. And recently, when we did the final cleaning of the detention basins themselves, you can actually see some of the the lines from my big machines that went in there to just do the final clean. So they're both good. And what we're, you know, Steve can probably do, I think we're probably asking for some forgiveness that perhaps the drainage easement access could be on the right side of her house, which is a larger area to get into, and it's a closer area to get into the larger pond. And it also gives access to the other one. And it doesn't interfere with any type of walking that that we see. But again, that's not my decision.
Yep.
That's kind of hers. But I mean, she can, you know, she she can obviously speak on that behalf. She did, you know, wonderful fence and things like that. So.
So can I just ask one question? So on on this lot diagram, is the the green, is that the non easement portion? Or is that the fence?
Well, I was gonna maybe do a different one. Does Steve maybe or somebody have a better?
Steve can share, I think, some of it, yeah.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, maybe a better drawing of what we're dealing with. And if you don't have one, Steve, then maybe we can find one somewhere.
Yeah, I can share one pretty quick here.
You got the actual plan. I pulled my old plan out, but I didn't bring it.
I've also got slides that show this encroachment too, if you need it. Yep. All right, so this is, this is from our drone, our latest drone flight. Now, the fence was not installed. The green lines are the property lines, the blue lines are the easement. Now, if I go over to the town's.
Which one's blue?
The light blue, you see the light blue, the cyan.
Oh, that one, okay.
Yep. If I just click over to the town's GIS, you can see the fence. It goes right to the property line. There's an easement down this side, as Chad was saying, is to the left of the house. And the reason there's an easement there is because there's a drainage pipe. The drainage pipe discharges water to this little settling area before it goes into the wetland. It's not just a pipe, Steve. It there was your plan showed a driveway in that location. Yep, exactly, because of access down there and also potential trail access. There's also, it's also part of a larger, the same easement on the right side of the house. And as you can see, you know, there's some evidence of even in the street where Eastland's construction and maintenance of the basin, the last little bit of cleanup, they were accessing down here. And if I go to Google Earth, you can see it even a little bit better. You know, you can see the trails and then the dirt marks in the street. This is really the the best access down to the detention basin. But when I quickly go back to, I'm sorry, when I quickly go back to our drone image that shows the lot lines and the easement, you can, you can kind of project where the fence would be. The fence goes out to the property line, down the property line, you know, back into the backyard and over, over to this side of the house. Now, I think what Chad was saying was that if they leave the fence up with the understanding that it would have to come down with a little bit of notice, that they'd be okay with that. They'd be willing to sign an agreement, I believe, to that, to that extent. But I do think when it comes to physical access to the basin for maintenance, this is the side that makes the most sense. And again, you can see the, you can see where Eastland was accessing before this drone flight was taking place to do their final, final basin cleaning and maintenance. Net that side of the easement, that side of the house and that easement has no issues for access. And access on this side also gives access to the settling pond. So it's not like that side was even critical for access. Not as critical as this side in our opinion. Is that, is that clear for everybody?
Yeah, I mean, what, what, it's clear to me with respect to the detention ponds or the the stormwater infrastructure, right? That, that I get. But part of this, I thought was supposed to be access to open space. And maybe we need to go back to, okay, that's where you're headed.
So I mean, here's the definitive plan. Just showing the extent of the easement. It really encompasses most of lot 12, which is 19 Elm Rock. You know, the back and then the bait, you know, the easement is over on lot 13 and lot 14. So either one of those bill could be access to the, to the Grafton Land Trust land.
Okay, that's why I just, I was wondering, am I misremembering? I thought there was, I thought actually on the plans that it mentioned that, but it doesn't. It just says proposed drainage access and easement. And then.
The plan I have shows it perfect.
Shows what?
The whole breakout.
But it doesn't necessarily say anything about access to open space or anything like that, does it?
Yeah. You want to go get it?
Yeah, it's right, Steve's showing it right now.
Yeah. I think it's on one of the pages.
Yeah, that's, that's the one right there.
Yeah, I wasn't sure.
It looks like a driveway going down behind the house. Right there, yeah, that's the plan.
And that's, that's actually not even on Ms. Sawko's lot. So that's the access. If access, you know, there's also an easement here, built accordingly down to this, and then there's the access to the open space, Grafton Land Trust land that, you know, will still be very feasible and practical.
Bill.
Mr. Omens.
Thank you. Steve, the the house to the right is, does that house have an easement on its left side also?
Yep, half the easements on lot 13 and the other half's on lot 12.
How many feet?
Oh, Peter, you always gotta ask tough questions.
Well, I mean, if it's three feet, it's no, it's not enough.
Yeah, it's a 20 foot easement, 10 on each side.
10 on each side?
I mean, what, what we're talking about seems very reasonable. I'm a little curious, I suppose, I was gonna say, why, why was it drawn the way it is? Why, but there's a pipe there? So you knew there was a pipe there. So I, you know, why it was drawn that way, who knows? And the, you know, the, there's an easement. I mean, their deed has an easement on it. So there's not necessarily even any agreement necessary. I mean, if the town needs to get in and replace the pipe, then, you know, they have the right to do that. The only idea that occurs to me is, you know, do we, we just maybe want to get a little bit of input from Paul Canoyer? You know, because this, it really, this becomes a little bit of the town's headache, right? Is, does Paul or does the DPW agree that the access on the right side of her house is adequate to get down there to do maintenance if they need to? If they're, if they're good with that, then maybe, you know, I, I think I'm good with it as well. My understanding is the land trust can put up access signs, but you know, I don't see why they couldn't put it up between houses as opposed to over on the other side. I don't know.
Right. Bill, just, just for clarification though, that her fence goes to a property line? So you wouldn't be able to use the right side of her house? It would have, the, the access would have to be basically on lot 13 and not lot 12?
No, no, the fence goes to the left side of her house property line.
On both, it goes to the property line on both, which. But here's, here's the problem with that. To remove that, they, by law, whoever has to take that fence down cannot go on the neighbor's property without permission. And we tell everybody when they call to put a fence up that it needs, it should be a foot off your property. Because by law, they cannot trespass onto 21 or onto 17 to get to that side of the fence.
Well, they can though, because there's an easement.
No.
No, it's an easement, but it's still private property.
Yeah, the easement's not for the fence.
The homeowner.
Right, or who's ever going to be having to take that fence down.
So the town can go in.
So now, well, yeah, the town can go in because it's easement. But if she hires a private company to come in and take that fence down, she needs permission from both sides of the neighbors because it's right on her property line.
Yeah, I wouldn't trust the lines in the GIS.
Yeah, that's, that, that's inaccurate.
No, I know, but I mean.
She, she did have the lot line staked by the engineers and they're off the property. They are off the property line.
Okay, as long as that's.
That shadow is not that.
All right.
It said Google Images.
Yeah, no, I get it.
So, so based on that, that pipe that's running on the, I don't know what direction that is, but.
Down this side?
Yep. Is there any conceivable way that there could be an emergency situation that there needs to be access to the pipe? I, I don't think so, right?
It's a free flowing drain pipe. It's not like it's a water main that's going to break or a sewer pump force main that's going to break. It's extremely unlikely that a drain pipe would need emergency type action.
But, but I, even if it happened, I would think the town would be in its rights to knock the fence down if they had to.
They would, absolutely, I agree with you.
I mean, you know, right, so I.
So, I mean, in terms of an agreement though, maybe it makes sense to enter into some kind of agreement that, you know, waives the, waives any liability on the town's part, you know, if they have to damage the fence or remove the fence, you know, for maintenance purposes.
So I, I'll defer to you and, and you know, being a lawyer and.
Well, no, I'm saying.
And all that, but on that.
Legal wise, I don't know.
Well, well.
That's at the end question.
Sure, I, I think my concern is there's supposed to be an easement to the open space. And now I realize that that fence goes property to property. So as far as I'm concerned, one side needs to come down.
I agree.
One, one side needs to come down to and be moved to the point of the easement. I mean, that's, you know, we, there was, you know, when we went through the process to, for this development, the open space issues were a huge part of it. And that's, that's what, you know, Mr. Crater and, and Land Trust and all had invested, you know, in hiring an attorney and, you know, making sure that the open space was accessible and. I, I think, I think you have to have the access, one side or the other, at the very least. Mr. Omens.
Yes, thank you, Bill. The question I have is to the house to the right of this property in discussion. Is that person aware of the easement through his yard or their yard? And we're talking about an easement to access the, the detention basins, but also to provide access to the land trust land. So basically people can be walking between those houses at their pleasure to access the land trust land. Does that neighbor, is that neighbor aware of that easement as well?
That's correct. Both sides have these easements and they're all deeded.
Okay.
So they've already been deeded, that's correct.
Okay.
When we were, you know, this is how we caught, got caught with this is we were out of here and then she inadvertently put it on their lot lines, not knowing that the fence probably shouldn't have gone on the easement. So that's, that's why we're here tonight.
So I, I do have a quick question in response to what Mr. Omens just said. I don't think the public actually has, the public has the right to go between the houses, her house and the house on the right. I don't think the public has the right to march down that land to get to the open space. Because the plan that we had up a few minutes ago showed the public access going down the left side. Right, I mean, that's showing where the public access is. And, and so I'm actually asking a question, it's to Dan Hill. I mean, Dan, do you, do you agree with what I'm saying that as far as public access? It's, it's to the left of her house, not to the right?
No, you're, you're right, because we had a condition in the permit, it's condition D5. And I can read it to you, just bear with me for a second. Condition D5 says that the gravel driveway showing the final plans on lot 12 as providing access to the detention basin shall also be open to the public for access to the budding land owned by the Grafton Land Trust. So the intent was that that gravel driveway was going to be the access point, not, not the land between lot 12 and lot 11.
Yep.
But. Have a question.
Yeah, Jeff, go ahead.
So what's the hardship right now? Is it taking down the fence or losing space by moving the fence? What's behind, what do you use the fence straight here for?
So you can't see it from the diagrams or from Google Maps, but the backyard actually slopes down into the retention pond over there. And it's a pretty steep slope and we have two young children and a dog. So I mean, they play there, all their stuff goes down there. So we thought we need to put a fence to make sure they don't get hurt or my dog doesn't go into the woods. So that was our thought. And we were wrong to put it there. We were not aware at that time when we put the fence. That's why we're here to ask you guys if you can work with us.
So some reconfiguration is okay?
Yes.
Okay.
The trouble I see is I walked it. I went down in between the houses the other day.
Yeah.
And to, to go down in between her house and the one to the left of her.
Yep.
And you, to take a right, the whole back of her fence got to come out too. Because that slope is from the fence down to that retention pond, you can't walk in between there or with that little, you can't, you can't walk in between it.
That's like, that's like over on Adams Road where they've got a retaining wall on a property line where we've got an easement. And Bill, you saw this, right? So, so it's probably, that may only be a 10 foot easement. So you got five foot down here and five foot up here.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's, I think it's a similar situation. It's, it's almost unwalkable. But I think what you're saying, if that fence isn't on the, if that fence is not on the easement, then it doesn't have to come down.
Oh, I think it's on the easement.
But on it, but you think it's in it or on the edge of it?
I think it's in it.
Steve, can you overlay the, your aerial again?
I think it's in it. Either that or everything's laid out wrong now.
So her fence, yeah. And her, I, I don't have control of it, but her fence goes past the blue line, yeah. Basically along that white line here.
Way over, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, in my mind, to the right of her house, and that's with my back to the street, the way I'm talking, to the right of her house is the perfect way. I didn't walk that side of the house, so I, but I'm assuming if the machines went down there, it's okay.
Yeah.
That, that would be the better, except if, if she made the fence not go past the house. Because then we're putting all the traffic on the other neighbor and that isn't fair either.
Yeah.
You're right there, I think, if I can.
Yep.
Big. At the right, the right side fence, I think if she moves it out of the easement, so it gets closer to her house, along the easement, it gets that, you know, roughly nine feet. I think it's a foot off the property line. If it moves back out of the easement, her fence, that opens up that whole corridor for access, which is a lot safer because you walked it. That's what I thought, Peter, too. Then you kill two birds with one stone. You have the public access going that way. And you also have Paul's full access of the full easement that to get down to the both of those ponds with full access.
So to do that though, doesn't the easement have to be modified to make it public access? Because it, it is on the other side.
Dan's saying that, I, I don't know how it's written. I think it's a blank, full blanket easement, but I haven't seen the rags. Maybe Dan.
Yeah, I think you could, the, the language in the plan just says access easement. It doesn't say access to what? It, it, and frankly, we, we know there's a, there's a trail, a trail connection that was intended. So I don't, I, I think it's fair, I think it's safe to interpret, or I think it's reasonable to interpret that the plan language to say that that, that means access to the drainage basin, but also access to trails. Now, if the other neighbor contests that, I, you know, the, the other neighbor might argue, well, yeah, but condition D5 said that access is supposed to be in the gravel driveway.
But Dan, doesn't it really matter what says on the deed? I mean, they have an easement, I mean, the deed usually, an easement is for the, you know, purpose of or for benefit of.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know if I've read the deed, but typically deeds just reference plans. And it probably says, subject to all the easements shown on the plan. That's probably what it says, but we can check. But that's, that's my assumption, because that's, that's typically how it's drafted. I read the deed for lot 12, Dan, and that's what it says. I just haven't read the deed for lot 13.
Wait, oh, hang on a second. So Steve, could you say it again? So you, you read the deed for lot 12 and it says?
It makes reference to, you know, the easement on their property, you know, as shown on the plans. Doesn't say what exactly what it's used for, just says, you know, access. Whatever the heck it's. And then, but I just didn't read the one for 13, adjoining lot, because I just didn't think it was pertinent until now.
Okay. Mr. Omens.
I empathize with your request. However, I'm also concerned to have it starkly clear for residents to come and for resident, and, and for the staff in the town that it shows on the plan as it does presently to the left side of your house. It shows access to the bins, the basins, and it shows access to the public lands. I think that if we choose to make the access, the public access to the open land to the right side of the house, that the plans should be modified in some way to show that clearly. Because, you know, as, as I've watched in my short experience in, in Grafton, too many times, the town is dealing with something today that wasn't clearly executed when the development went in or, you know, and it's one thing for us to have an agreement, but someone's has to live with this. And I, I could see a situation down the road where, you know, 10 years from now, somebody's saying, there are people walking through my yard. What gives them the right to? I think it has to be clearly stated if we're going to put the, and I agree with that. If, if we're going to put the, the access to the right of her house, then you just have to move a little bit of your fence. And then the left side can remain. And if they want to walk in there with a weed whacker or something, they can do that. But I think it should clearly show that it's the access that presently shows on this map on screen to the left side of your house. That level of detail should be shown on the right side of the house. Now, Dan, what would it take to do that? Can those plans be modified easily or?
Well, the deed, I just pulled up the deed for lot 13. So the easement wording in lot 13 basically says the right to enter lot 13 with the equipment necessary to officiate the easement and the right to install, construct and maintain any and all drainage facilities within the easement and necessary easement area that may be necessary, including the right to convey said easement to the town of Grafton.
Yeah, and, and Peter actually had printed out a copy of lot 19's deed in, in the easements. There's no mention in these easements of public access. It's all about, you know, utility easement and drainage and that sort of thing. There's, there's no mention of public access. So it sounds like there's no mention of public access in, in either of them.
I think, but if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think a compromise here with the, with the, with the lot owner could be that, you know, you could agree to let her keep the fence up. In, in exchange, what you would get is an affirmative easement from her on the 10 feet that's on her property as public access to the, to the gravel driveway that's shown in the plan. I, I, I think if you try, if you showed a new gravel driveway between lots 12 and 13, I think you're going to hit some resistance from that other lot owner.
Yeah.
If I were them, I, I wouldn't be too happy about that. So, but, but given that there's a, there's an owner that needs, that wants some forgiveness and needs forgiveness, this might be an opportunity then to get an affirmative easement from her for at least the 10 feet that's on her property, which should be wide enough for public access.
But that also goes along with, with moving the fence in 10 feet?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yep.
Yeah, okay, that, that makes a lot of sense.
Out of curiosity, are the, are there trails back there if you walk down between?
No.
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 So what are the odds that the land trust is actually going to ever do anything in this location?
What are the odds? It's hard to say. It's hard to say. They've got a member that likes to cut trees. There you go.
In the wetland?
I don't know if that's a wetland. That's not a wetland.
But that but that's land trust land right there.
Uh, to the right, yeah.
Right on the other side of that line, that's.
An adventurism sort may want to just go down there. And 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 use that as access. So I think that that is a solution if. If the easement to the right of your property could indicate. That that easement indicates that it's public access. To the rear of the lot, that might be, then you just take down a little bit of the fence. You have uh an additional wording in your easement.
Yeah, I I it sounds very reasonable.
Yeah, a- absolutely. I think Dan was hitting it on the nail. Um, if 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 the butter, you know, with her approval, of course. If she moves the fence out of the easement, okay, so then it's out of the easement, so it moves more or less ten feet over or nine feet over. I'll also do the necessary work for her to sign by my attorneys to give that. Easement on her property, the pedestrian thing that should save us all. Then we have Paul's best access down there. And we also have a refined pedestrian easement to a logical potential. How to get out to the open space if it ever does happen, so.
My only request is like if, when we do move the fence, it's like. You don't need access right now, so if you could let us keep the fence for now. And then when you need access to it, we will relocate the fence ten feet from the easement.
I think it has to be moved before town meeting.
I think it does, Tim.
I I think it has to be moved beforehand.
If it if it goes to town meeting and somebody's watching this meeting that we're agreeing to not move the fence and they bring it up. The whole taking of the road could get shot down.
Kay has a question.
Kay, do you have a question?
Yeah, yeah, I do. Um, so to the homeowner. Who originally gave you the the lines for where you were to put the fence?
We had it surveyed. Um, I don't remember the company right now, but I I can. Give it to whoever is interested. Uh, they were the ones who put the stakes down to mark the property.
So do, so, uh, you know, in looking at what she did the right thing, she had it surveyed, like the fence company didn't do their. Homework to realize that there were easements on both sides. To me, both sides should have been pulled in. Left side and the right side, and now she's having to. You know, move the fence because somebody told her, yeah, this is fine.
There's a fence salesman Kay who's selling fences.
But, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, it's it's more than just the sides, Kay. I mean.
But I I agree that I think it needs to be corrected now, so so we don't, I just feel, and I'm sorry for the homeowner, but. Somebody didn't do properly by her, you know, by telling them where they really needed to put this fence. Because the easements are there. It's not like it's it's secret. It's public. That's what they're supposed to do, so. I think it needs to be moved as well to make it proper, so we don't have to worry about this down the road.
I can tell you that uh my company surveyed, Turning Point surveyed their property lines, but we surveyed. Probably a dozen property lines in this subdivision. You never know why someone wants their property line staked. A lot of them didn't put a fence up. They just want to know where their lines are. If someone said, hey, we want to put a fence up, definitely would tell them.
We wanted a fence up when we had it surveyed. That's the reason why we had it surveyed.
I I, you know, I've had my property staked. I knew there was an easement, but I didn't ask anyone to stake the easements. I just, I wanted the the. The uh, the edges staked, but if you said you wanted a fence, it's, you know, it's unfortunate.
It is what it is now.
Yeah, yeah. All right, it's it sounds like we have consensus on on a on a plan. I mean, it's not exactly what you came here hoping to get. I understand that. Um, but I, you know, I I think it's a good compromise. I mean, as as was pointed out, a lot of the fence is in the easement. And I think that what we're talking about is just taking one side of it, moving it in ten feet. Um, and and, you know, essentially you you leave the rest of it be. Um, and uh, and then just some language added, you know, that. Mr. Borman, I guess, will will help to to get drafted and uh Dan Hill should review it, obviously, for for our benefit. Um, but it sounds like we have a plan to move forward.
So do you happen to know the length of that? I guess notch or the piece coming directly down next to the house? Is that the nine feet? So is it gonna be? You know, even with the end of the house on this, the other end?
Or maybe can Steve overlay the the easement again? How close to, where where is, where does the easement line come? Wait a minute, that's, there we go. Oh, it is close to the house.
Yeah, it just misses the deck. I think we'd be more concerned about the space pedestrians can access outside the fence. And above this, you know, above this row of rocks.
Say that again, Steve. I I didn't quite follow you.
I think with this pedestrian easement, we're talking about supplementing. We would just want to make sure there's adequate pedestrian access outside the fence. Within the easement, but outside the fence when it's moved, and then they would go outside the fence this way.
No, we're we're not talking about having them move the fence on that side. We're talking about having them move the fence on the right side.
Only nine feet over. If it's, if it's a ten foot easement and, you know, they've staked it a foot off, they just need to move it another.
Yes, so we're not talking about moving that side, Steve. We're talking about moving the other side.
Yeah, the other side.
So we move that side. Move, uh, we move that side and then and then.
That's it, right there.
And then the homeowner provides a. Uh, an ease, you know, an additional easement that makes it very clear it's for public access to the land trust land.
Yeah, okay. I see what you mean. Yep, makes sense.
And then what happens to the easement on the on the left side? Does that stay or does does that?
Yeah, no, it's it stays and, you know, if the town needs to get in there to do maintenance per the, what's written in their deed, then the town has a right to do that and. You know, that means they need to take the fence down so the town can get in and do what they need to do, then they'll need to do that, but that's. You know, I think that's something that comes later if 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 necessary, and that's between the homeowner and the town.
So we're asking her to move the right side. To uh to have a nut, an easement for access on the right, but keeping the left. And if down, down the line in the future, if they, so. Why wouldn't we just do the easement while we're doing this? Just do the easement on the right side for the town as well? So they can access that with, is that too much of a?
I think that's what we're saying.
That's what we're talking about.
The left side should. If they're gonna use the right side as an easement, the town and for for public access to the back. The left side will just kind of become moot, right?
No, there's still a pipe there.
It's still an easement, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right.
And, you know, I don't, I'm not so sure we'd be having this conversation at all if it was only drainage easements. It's the public access that I think we're concerned about. The drainage easements. You know, I I I think are pretty clear, and if the town needs to go in and take down someone's fence, they they they'll do it.
Which maybe won't happen, but okay, that makes sense. All right, thank you. Yeah.
Okay, I we consensus here? Um, any other comments?
The the thing that sucks, though, is we have to do this for public access that's probably or. Most likely not going to be accessed.
Disagree with it, but I think we have to.
No, I I agree. I agree. It's a.
And we're lucky to have it, so, yeah.
Um, all right, this is a public hearing. Anyone else want to speak? Is there anyone in the meeting?
And Katrina, uh, I asked her to look this up. I didn't print it.
Oh, you didn't?
I'm not good enough to go into the registry. It was Katrina that did the bookwork.
So, um, yeah, so hopefully it's just one more continuation. I assume that's what we need to do here, right? We probably continue one more time. Work out the details and let's get back, um.
I don't know, I don't know when the deadline for the.
I asked Fiona that and I, you know what?
I mean, we we can have a placeholder for. And if the fence isn't moved by town meeting, then we pass over or something. Which I don't know, you don't want to hear that, Chad, but.
Well, I know it doesn't snow in the summertime.
Doesn't snow in the winter either, apparently.
I would just suggest that you check with the uh town administrator's office. So your dates as to when they need the, uh, they gonna have a, they're gonna have a placeholder. To make sure that you have the information to them to satisfy the completion.
I I think we have enough time to take care of this.
All right, so do we have any pending cases? All right, so, um. So we have no reason to meet other than for this. All right, yeah, but but we gotta do it. We gotta get it done. Um, how much time?
No idea. If I I don't know how long it takes to for them to move. I'd rather consult with them, you know, I'm gonna pick up the legal costs for the. I mean, Dan can review it if you like, um, and uh. It's a pretty easy document, so we can get that out the door in the next couple of days. It's just the coordination with her, you know, her husband, I'm sure to. And the fencing company and how how, what it looks like out there, stake it out in the field, you know, it's late February, but I'm sure you can get things in the ground relatively quick.
So, uh, it, I guess to Dan, is there a way? Maybe we can close this now and 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 make a determination of completeness now pending. Uh, you know, something, I I'm not even sure what it what it is. Um, or or do we want him to go off and and maybe get the legal document in place? I don't know that we need to wait for our completion to the fence fence actually being removed. May- maybe we do. What do you think, Dan? Help me out here.
I agree with you, Bill. I don't think you need to have the fence gone, and I don't think you need to have the easement signed. I think you can just make it conditional. That your your affirmative action on determining everything to be complete is conditioned upon. The fence being moved and the and the easement deed being being signed and delivered to the town of Grafton.
Don't forget, we have to go to town meeting and and what, and somebody from this board has to get up basically and say. Everything is okay with this development. So that fence has to be moved.
Right, and it, and it, yeah, so I mean, we, yeah, we we we, and we can go to town meeting and say it's not.
And pass over.
Right, recommend pass over or?
I don't want to do that.
No, right.
I just texted Fiona to ask her about town meeting, so. If she answers me or not, when we have to have. Everything in. I want to say it's. Want to say it's the end of March.
Getting close.
I know. I think that's when it is, but I will double check with Fiona.
I think Chad, as I remember, you must have to put in a. Put in the article and have it signed by ten voters?
That I don't know. Steve probably has an idea. I mean, they're working with my counsel with the final documents, I think, in easements and thing, maybe with Dan, maybe. Maybe they can speak to where exactly the legal work is.
To put it on town meeting, yeah.
So I'm I'm trying to just come up with what the motion would be here a little bit on the fly and, um, you know, it would be some sort of a motion to determine, um. You know, what's in a legal notice, Elmarock Estates, um, i- is complete. And I want to say subject to the following conditions. So what are the conditions, um? Delivery to the town. Of an executed, um. What, executed easement?
A deed conveying the easement to the town. A public access easement.
Is it a deed? It's actually a deed?
Yeah, it's an easement deed.
An easement deed.
Public access between lots.
Conveying public access.
On lot twelve, on the record plans.
On lot twelve. Public access to open space. At rear of lot twelve. Oh, that two open spaces. On lot twelve, to open space at rear of lot twelve. And then two.
Land trust land instead of open space?
Is that what it is? Land trust, Grafton Land Trust land or?
Open space always refers to like open space in the development, and there is none in there.
All right, so uh GLT land. So delivery to the town of Grafton. An easement deed conveying public access on lot twelve to Grafton Land Trust land at the rear of lot twelve. And then two is relocating. Fence on lot twelve. Um, to uh.
I think we can just say removal of fence from the easement.
Yeah, well, out of the easement area that's going to be conveyed to the town.
All right, removal of fence. On lot twelve. From within. The, um. Public access easement.
Well, that includes the back and we're not.
No, the public access easement. So it's the new easement. Yeah, public access easement. I started going where you were going. So should we just say the public access? So, um. So it'd be a motion to deter. Motion to determine the the subdivision owners Elmarock Estates per comprehensive permit issue on October twenty seventh. Amended on January twenty eighth, twenty nineteen, and again on twenty eight, February twenty eighth. We amended it twice on January eighteenth, twenty nineteen, and again on February twenty eighth.
Yep, because we amended it when Chad bought it and then we amended it, um.
Okay, right, as long as that's that's right, so a month or later. Um, so that stuff uh to be complete, subject to the following conditions. Condition one is delivery to the town of Grafton. An easement deed conveying public access on lot twelve to open space at the, to Grafton Land Trust land at the rear of lot twelve. And then condition number two would be removal of fence on lot twelve from within the public access easement.
So a quick question. So after this, there'll be two accesses? Or are we taking away the original?
No, so after we're done, the, all of the drainage easements remain. Okay, so there's, so she has a drainage easement on either side of her house. One side has a pipe. I don't think there's a pipe on the other side. I think it's just access. Um, so those all remain. We're adding. A public access easement because it's really not clear in the existing easements that it's actually public access. So we're adding a public access easement. To.
To the right side.
To the right side of her house.
But on the map, it shows an easement, access easement on the left side.
What's that?
On the map? So that'll remain?
So this.
On the map, but it doesn't mention it in the deeds.
So this is gonna stay where there's a drainage easement because there's a pipe here? And over here, she's gonna move the fence in ten feet to get here, and then this is gonna also become the public access easement. Makes sense?
Just on her land.
On her portion of the easement.
Yeah, right here.
And and just so you're clear, the reason you're doing this is because in exchange for granting that easement. We're allowing you essentially to keep the the fence standing on on the rest of it. You still may someday if the town comes in and says we need to dig up that pipe, you're gonna have to deal with that.
Cross the bridge when we get there.
It'll probably never happen.
Exactly. All right, um, so I I kind of read the motion off this, where somebody maybe says, oh, wait, oh, wait, whoa, 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 whoa. Uh, intending a motion to close case, uh, yeah, public hearing, number, where am I?
So, we gonna have another meeting?
No.
Just to finish up.
Number eight twenty-seven.
So how do we know the easement's written correctly?
Dan's gonna review it. How else do we know, actually?
I, I just don't feel comfortable with it. Not, not that I, I know we're gonna go by Dan's advice anyway, but I just don't I feel kind of weird not having one more meeting and just, even if it's five minutes and say, everything okay, everything's okay, and we leave. I don't know.
Others? How, how do others feel?
I don't know if you, if you can leave it hanging with something in the air that other people are correcting.
Are you volunteering to review the deed with?
No, I, because I don't know what I'm...
Well, see, that's the thing, I, I, you know, none of us necessarily do.
No, and we're gonna go by Dan's advice anyways, so, but...
And it's in, it's in the motion what what the deed needs to accomplish.
What has to be done, okay, alright, that's fine.
I think, I think Nina just wants the same, even more.
Yeah, we haven't seen you enough in the past year, Chad, huh?
Yeah, I, and, and we do this, I mean, Dan, you know, you know, we do the comprehensive permits and the, and the deed writers and all that have to be reviewed, or, you know, there's other stuff that needs to be reviewed after the fact that
Right.
you know, so, um, I, I, I think we're, we're good with that.
By the way, Dan, that was a good catch.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so if somebody could say so moved.
So moved. Second.
So the motion made in second, and now I lost it. Here it is. Oh, wait, no, it's, alright, alright, let's be clear, I'm sorry.
Right now, we're closing the public hearing.
I needed a motion to close the public hearing for case number eight ninety, no, 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 eight.
Twenty-seven.
So moved. Second.
Eight twenty-seven.
She got eight ninety-eight out there twice.
Yeah, I, I cut and pasted, that's mine, it's eight twenty-seven.
Eight twenty-seven, alright, so I need a mo- a motion to close case number eight twenty, public hearing for case eight twenty-seven.
So moved. Second.
Alright, so motion made in second. Need to do a roll call vote, uh, so, any discussion? So roll call vote, uh, we'll start with, um, Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Vice chairman votes yes. Okay, now, the motion I need is a motion a motion to determine the subdivision owners Elmarock Estates per the comprehensive permit that was issued October twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, amended on January eighteenth, twenty nineteen, and amended again on February twenty eighth, nine, twenty-eighth, nine, two thousand nineteen is complete. Subject to the following conditions. Condition one, delivery to the town of Grafton a easement deed conveying public access on lot twelve to Grafton Land Trust land to the rear of lot twelve. And condition two, removal of a fence on lot twelve from within the public access easement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
I'm gonna recuse myself just on this one.
Okay.
Just on this one.
No, that, that's right, so I'll, I'll appoint, um, Jiffy to be a voting member. So, uh, roll call vote again, Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Jiffy, I don't remember your last name, so J-
Thomas.
Mr. Thomas, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, and vice chairman votes yes.
Can I have both of those so I can?
Both of what?
This one and the legal notice that you took it off of. Just so I have them both together. I'm sure I have it somewhere, but...
No, that's fine, I, I don't, I don't need this stuff anymore. Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, so, that takes care of that. I think Kay, you can leave at this point.
I can.
You're welcome to stay, obviously, but...
So do we have another meeting that I need to put on my calendar? Just so I know?
I've got nothing in right now.
Okay, she'll let us know, alright, you guys.
I mean, e- even if we have to meet again for, for Upton Road, you're not on that case, so...
Yeah, I'm not.
So it doesn't matter, yeah, you're right.
Sorry about that, I wish I was.
Yeah, that's alright.
Well, we can use your input.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I know, I can always come, yeah. It's true, that's true.
Alright.
Alright, you guys, good night.
Good night.
Okay.
Good night.
Good night.
Alright, so now we, uh, brings us to, uh, Upton Road, and, um this hearing had already been closed, I think we're at this point, we just need to kind of do a final review on the decision and then vote. Um, so Dan, maybe I, I, I hand it to you and kind of take us through any of these last minute changes, I think everyone has a printed copy of the final. Maybe we could display the red lines and you could I, I know there's a lot of very minor red lines, capitalization, things like that, I don't think we need to talk about every one of those, but certainly anything any of the more substantial red lines you could maybe take us through?
Sure, yep, I can hit the head, headlights.
Do you want, do you want to share your screen, Dan?
Um, I don't have it queued up. Okay. Alright, so, basically, I plugged in the, uh, traditional, you know, introductory paragraphs, um put in the dates of the hearings, um, the comments that we received from various boards and peer reviewers. So sections one, two, three, uh, these are all new. None of this should be controversial, or this is basically all boilerplate that we copy and paste from all of our decisions.
Okay.
Um, if you keep scrolling down to the findings. So these are all of the new findings, um I, the, number one describes the zoning, um, the location of the project. Number two just references the, the, uh, private driveway easement that crosses the site. Number three just discusses the dimensional requirements in the agricultural zoning district. Paragraph four speaks to, um what's on the site currently and the wetland areas that are on the site. Paragraph five speaks to the fact that the developer is agreeing to convey a five-point-five acre parcel of open space to the town of Grafton. Paragraph six just, um, sets out the, the fact that we have a stormwater system, that it's been reviewed by Graves Engineering, it's gonna be subject to an order of conditions issued by the Conservation Commission. Section, paragraph seven, uh, describes the sewer system and the connection of the project to the municipal system through the forest main connection that needs to be installed. And then paragraph eight, uh, describes some of the unique, unique issues with the intersection that were, that were raised during the hearing. There's gonna be a subsequent highway access permit required for the project from Mass DOT uh, during that process. Uh, the suggested recommendations from Tech will be broached at that time by agreement. And then paragraph nine, uh, references the memorandum of agreement between the select board and the developer concerning the affordability requirements for the project.
Yep.
So, the conditions, um, if you scroll down, Katrina, I think the first major change was an H, but just go slowly to make sure there's nothing else.
Chad, do you want a paper copy?
No, I'm okay.
You sure?
Yeah, I'm just scrolling, I'm, I'm spinning on my phone here, while doing the same thing.
Okay, because I have a copy I can give you.
Thank you, though. Oh, do you really? An extra one?
Yeah, because I can just print another one to have them sign it. That's, that's not the red line copy, that's just a, the final copy.
I thought, didn't we have in the pre-construction submissions? Is that where the sureties?
No, the, for, for the stormwater?
Yeah, or, I guess everything. Because those are all pre-construction, right?
Y- yeah, all the, all the surety stuff is down in, in the H, and then there's a sewer surety in the R.
Okay, we can cross that bridge when we get there.
Yeah, I, I guess there's no changes here in, uh D, E, uh, F, actually, uh, Katrina, go back to, um yeah, no, it's not, I, I added a sec, a condition at the end of F, I think.
F nine. There you go.
So this just references the, um, the fact that there, there were recommendations made by Kevin, uh, Dondrade from Tech uh, for some improvements to the intersection, and, um, it was agreed, I think, by consensus that we weren't gonna impose those as conditions, but that the applicant should discuss those with Mass DOT. So I wanted to make sure that got captured here.
That seems reasonable.
I have one question.
Mr. Yeomans?
Dan, the sewer department had a lot of conditions, have they been specifically outlined?
I, I'm not sure I know what you mean, Bill.
Paul Canoyer and his memorandums to us outline very specific requirements of the sewer department relative to, um, the equipment, et cetera, and I don't have that memo in front of me. Have that, have they been clearly dealt with and?
Yeah, I, I, I believe so, it's further down in section I, um, but that, as we get down to I, we should look at that carefully, but I'm my intent was I went, I went through Paul, Paul had like four memos, and I went through all of them to make sure that his requests were incorporated.
Alright, so the new F nine is basically saying that, um, the applicant will, um you know, essentially, you know, bring these suggestions to Mass DOT and, and, and that's about it, that's the only requirement.
Yeah, a- and the sightline clearing, so there was an agreement that they would clear vegetation within the site triangles for Route one forty, I mean, subject to Mass DOT approval since it's, it's their land.
Yep.
But, yep.
Understood, okay.
Sorry, Dan, where was that prior? There was a prior, I don't know if it was a condition or what, um, regarding that intersection? Because I thought you said something about a conveyance of a deed or something, or easement, sorry.
Wait, I mean, you're talking about, um, four, eight? Which is, I think it'd be that back on page four?
Yeah, 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 that, that is it.
I mean, this is just a finding, right?
Okay.
And then F nine becomes, and I think it's something else, but yeah.
I, I thought when we when you mentioned this, Dan, that you said something about a, an easement or some...
Or sightlines?
Yeah.
No.
No, alright.
Because it, it's not their land, it's, it's, uh, it's within the right of way of Route one forty.
Oh, I, maybe it's the accent.
There's a dr- I'm sorry, there's a driveway easement that, that's, uh, they have to finish the driveway, they, they're gonna relocate the driveway easement for the neighbor. And that's a separate condition in here that they have to complete that work before the first occupancy permit?
I was talking with Mass DOT, because I
Okay.
it just kind of stuck in my head that there was some language that they were kind of dependent on Mass DOT, and if Mass DOT didn't do it, but I, I think the way it's, it's written, it it's more of a suggestion.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
Okay, we can scroll down, um...
I think the next one's the H one A. Yeah, there you go.
Alright, so just a little explanation here, so, um, I, I spoke with Chad and Steve this afternoon and uh, Steve was, uh, good enough to send me some markups a couple of days ago, and, and the bottom line is that they're comfortable finishing essentially the, the binder course for all pavement on the site, including the driveway and the parking areas, and finishing all the stormwater infrastructure prior to the issuance of the first occupancy permit for the project. So that's actually more than what we typically would get in a forty B project. Um, so that's, that's how, that, so section A now reflects that, that agreement that, uh, no occupancy permit for any unit, uh, for any building shall be issued until the binder course for the driveway and all parking areas in the project has been completed, and all the stormwater systems have been completed for the entire project, period. So the only thing left after that would be the top coat of the pavement, so if you scroll down to B
Yep.
That's, that's covered right there. Now, they have to fit, obviously they have to, well, we, we set this up so they have to at least put the top coat down before the, the last occupancy permit, the sixth building, so it's the sixth building. Uh, but we also, I also built in a, a, an alternative here so that if they need to get that final occupancy permit, but it's, uh, you know, in the fall, and they, and they need the, the base coat to go through the entire winter, then they can post a bond or surety, um, and get the occupancy permit early. Uh, and then we're protected because we've got the money to finish the top coat if we had to do that, I mean, ideally, we, we never have to go to do that because it's private property, we, it's not a public way, but this would give some flexibility so they can get their occupancy permit, even if it hasn't finished the winter for the, for the base coat.
And the applicant's all fine with this, you guys, in a second?
Seems, it's reasonable.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Okay, so then I think we go down to I.
The guy nine's the next one.
Yeah, okay, so I talked to Paul Canoyer, and, uh, he does, uh, require some surety with respect to forest mains. It does, it doesn't sound like there's a written policy anywhere, but he, he does require there to be a bond put up, uh, for construction of these things, so um, basically what I did is I put in a I put in a couple of sentences here that, or one sentence that, that says that, um, the applicant shall, upon request of the sewer department, post a financial surety, uh, in, in an amount equal to the replacement cost of the sewer forest main. So, if Paul never requires it, then the applicant doesn't have to post it, but it's essentially optional for the sewer department that if they want some surety for this forest main, they can ask the applicant for it, and the applicant has to put up the surety for, for the forest main.
Does that surety, is there an end date to that surety, or is that?
I mean, I, I, I would think there would be a term, and I, I left this open-ended so that the sewer department can impose what they think is reasonable.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I, yeah, okay, and, and I, I guess if the, if the, if the sewer department has something that's unreasonable, they can come back to us and and figure out what to do, but, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's the only thing I think is, that I see is it's a little there's no end to it, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the intent, I, I don't think was to you know, thirty or forty years from now, when the useful life of the pipe is, you know, finished, that you have to hate to replace it, I mean, you're gonna have to replace it anyway because it's your project, but I don't think the, the, the point was to put a bond in there for that, for that long a period of time, I think the point of the bond was if something goes wrong in the first few years, uh, that if, if you, if you've left and, uh, the, we, the, the town has to chase somebody to, to do this, we have the money to do it ourselves.
Okay.
Alright, so that's that, and then, um uh, I did add actually another sentence, maybe, Katrina, is this the last version I sent?
So you never sent me a red line version of that new amendment?
Oh, okay.
So it's...
So there's, there's a new condition, I eleven?
So hold on, let me, I have that one open, so give me one sec.
Yep. So the sewer department commissioned CDM to do a capacity analysis for the project, um, and Paul asked me today if we can put a condition in the decision to just require the applicant to, to cover that cost, I guess, I guess it's, you know, standard operating procedure whenever there's a, a big project that if there's a capacity analysis, that the applicant would pay for that cost.
I have no issues other than just receiving a copy of it.
Okay.
Yeah, I asked Paul to send that to Katrina.
When I get it, I'll get it to you.
No problem.
Okay.
Alright, and then I think that's it. There, there were a couple, uh, actually, there was one, I, I made one change- actually, there was one, I, I made one change, the waiver section, substantive change. Um, yeah, right there. So, um, I, I thought it was, I thought it was actually important to just to flag the fact that even though this site is not in the multifamily zoning district, um, it would, um, it, a multifamily building would require, the zoning bylaw, bylaw would require more robust setbacks for multifamily buildings than what's in the agricultural district. So I, 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 you don't have to do this, but I thought it would be, I, I thought it's prudent to include this, uh, waiver, uh, and they, they actually did ask for this, uh, in, in a prior version of the waiver list. I'm, I'm not sure if it got taken off or not, but, um, so we, we did discuss this at, at a prior meeting sometime, probably in the fall, that the side yard setback is, the, the, they, they get as close as twenty-three feet at building four hundred, and they get as close as twenty-five feet for building five hundred, um, which is a slight variation from what's required on, in the multifamily district.
Okay.
And aside from that, I think I made a few typo changes in the, in the waiver list, but nothing substantive. Yeah, we missed the allowed in that column, um.
Yep. Alright. So then, um, the copy you printed has that I eleven, that's this one. So you've got the final.
I have the final, yeah. I, I just printed a second copy because I had, gave Chad my other copy. So yes, the, the new one has I eleven. Let me just double check.
I mean, the one you printed us has I eleven.
Mine had I eleven.
Yeah.
Yeah, has I eleven.
Does it have, does yours have the yellow highlighting on that?
No. So he, the, there's a red line copy and there's a final copy. So the one I printed here has the final copy that I will have you guys sign. But I printed another one because I gave Chad my other copy.
Well, no, but this, that's what I'm saying. This, this is the fi, the non-red line copy.
Oh, it's highlighted. Yeah.
That's, that's the only one I got was.
You probably just print that page.
I didn't get it.
You want to get rid of that highlighting? So we, we just went through this, and I know it's only been a few minutes, but we didn't make any other changes, right, as we went through this, Dan?
Just now? No.
Okay.
So, let me take that off. Yeah, I'll just reprint this one page and put it in, after I have you guys sign it. So that was the only thing. Yep, I'll reprint page twenty-seven.
Alright, um, any other comments or thoughts or discussion? So, um, I guess at this point, we just, it's a motion to, um, accept the decision for case, whatever this is, as drafted? Is that really all I need to do, Dan, at this point?
It is.
Case number eight ninety-eight.
So I, I'd change a motion to, um, approve the decision as drafted, case number eight ninety-eight?
There's just one thing that we noted at a conservation meeting, uh, is about the site stabilization bond, I believe. Um, they said they would, the conservation said they wouldn't need one as long as you guys have one, which I think is in here. I just don't want a double, a, a double dip if there's anything in, in here. I don't want two stabilization bonds. Um, I think, I, is that right, Steve?
Yeah, exactly. And the ZB, the conservation just wanted to see documentation of it, that it existed in the ZBA's court. Um, and it should be there because it was there from Pleasant Street. I just, I didn't get a chance to look. Just dawned on me a little while ago, so I apologize, but does that ring a bell, Dan? Can we do a word search or is there something for stabilization bond?
Yeah, I can look at my, my version.
C fifteen? Oh, no, that's stabilization requirements. Would it be a condition or would be a, yeah, it would be a condition?
Yes.
It's C fifteen, yeah.
Well, that, that's just talking about how it gets, it doesn't mention surety, does it? Notice there are barriers left.
Did we have one for Pleasant Street?
I, 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 I thought we did, um.
I, I, I think we remember talking about it and not requiring it because I thought that we didn't think it was necessary. And I, we've done them before in other projects, but I don't.
I know that the Conservation Commission likes to have
Oh, H two. It, it's in H two.
Okay. Did you? It's, Katrina, can you scroll up to H two?
Yeah.
Please? Just want to get my eyeballs on the wording.
Oh, yeah. I, I think that one was on Pleasant Street, I believe.
Yep.
H two.
Yep. Page twenty-two.
Yep.
Looks like we got it.
Yeah, got it, I believe. Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Dan. Carry on.
Actually, Bill, did, did, did you ever take a vote to actually approve the issuance of the permit?
What, is, isn't that what we're doing now?
Yeah, I, I guess I would be more explicit in the motion. I would just say, you, you're vote, you're voting to approve issuance of the comprehensive permit uh, in the form of the decision that was, that's been drafted. Just to make it very clear that you're approving the comprehensive permit. You're not just approving a decision, you're approving the permit itself.
Alright, then I, I think the motion comes, um, perhaps sort of move that the Grafton zoning board of appeals approve the issuance of a comprehensive permit as described in the drafted decision for case number eight ninety-eight, uh, Upton Road properties.
So move.
Second. Yeah, so approve issuance of a comprehensive permit as described in the drafted decision for case number eight ninety-eight, Upton Road properties. Um, so motion made and seconded. We have four, uh, members who can vote on this. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Yelwens?
Yes.
Uh, vice chairman votes yes. We're done. Uh, I noticed that this started on June seventh, so not too bad, about eight months took us to do it.
So I did get a text back from Fiona regarding Elmarock. She's like, she, the, she believes the warrant is due in early April, which means we would have to have everything issues, but she's not sure what the deadline is for your citizen's petition. Because you've got to submit a petition with ten or twenty resident signatures on it, ten signatures on it, to get it on.
Okay.
So I will double check with her, though, on Monday.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that, so, okay.
So I think.
The Z, the ZBA can't sponsor this article? Usually for road acceptance, it's usually like the planning board would sponsor the article.
Yeah.
But that's not the case here?
I think we still kind of have to do what planning does, so we still need the citizen's petition, but it's going to come through the ZBA, not planning. But we still have to do the citizen's petition. Again, I will double check with Fiona. But I believe that's the case. Basically, we're doing everything the planning board does, so you have to do everything that you would normally do. We're, we're just taking the place of planning.
Yeah, I just, most towns I see the planning board sponsor the article for a subdivision acceptance, but if that's not their procedure, then we'll get residents within the development to do a petition.
Yeah.
And the wording on the petition will, will, will work together to get the wording on the petition.
Yeah, yeah, talk, talk to Fiona. I, I'm not sure myself now, like you said, whether the planning board does it or those come in as citizens. I, I.
The applicant does it.
The applicant does it?
Yeah.
And get more than ten because you might, I know of an instant last year where somebody was trying to, it was a road. They missed, they had ten, one signal, two wasn't good.
Wasn't registered. There gotta be registered voters.
Yeah.
Right.
So get twelve or whatever.
Yeah. Okay. Um, at this point, I hand the meeting back over to Mr. Waller, but, um, Dan, um, I'd like to have a, a brief conversation when this meeting's over, um. I don't know, do we have much more to do or we almost done?
Just minutes, that's it.
If you don't mind just sitting tight for a minute or two, um, Dan, but on, once the meeting's over, I'd like to just have a quick conversation.
So you just want to hand me your paper that you wrote the motion on?
Yeah.
So I have it. Thank you.
Alright, right, so you got the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
Alright.
Thanks, Chad.
Good night. Got a nice tan, Chad.
Yeah, I know.
Good night.
Congratulations.
Heavy equipment auction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There was one typo in our neighbors. I already fixed it.
Okay.
Oh, and then I've got to, I'll go grab, while you guys are doing those, let me go grab the other decision for you guys to signature.
For Elmarock, was Dan going to work on the wording of the easement? At that time? I didn't even.
You mean tonight?
No, eight, number eight twenty-seven. In the, in the minutes.
Working on the wording of the easement.
Maybe researching or.
Oh.
Might be researching.
It might be.
But there was no, from that meeting, there was no
Yeah, I.
A plan to make any changes.
No, 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 no.
You know what? I, I would strike that bullet.
Okay. If you can find this in blue. Do you have a blue pen, Peter?
Here.
I think mine's black.
Throw pens at Peter.
I don't, I don't, I don't have any other, um, so I just say, uh, except, I, I move we accept the meeting minutes of February first, twenty twenty-four as amended.
So move.
Motion made and seconded. No discussion. Peter?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Yelwens?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. Alright, this timeline. Go ahead.
I move adjourned. Second.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Take a roll call vote. Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Yelwens?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. Meeting adjourned.